Rebecca, where's that?
Good.
You're set? All right. We stand for allegiance. What do you leave us?
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Um, you've got an agenda. I'm just gonna briefly, we're gonna change a couple things around, um, just to make the evening probably work smoother. Jim Moulton's here from Actar, he's gonna be up right after we do minutes and warrants. Then we are going to, um, do the presentation of the candidates for the alderman. Um, they can stay, they can leave, whatever. I think what we decided to do is we will have an executive session at the end of regular business to discuss and decide on the, the appointee. And then they will be, uh, sworn in and given everything else for the meeting two weeks hence. Then we will go to the police station, water tower, and, and then finish up. But I think that's, that seems to be a, hopefully we'll get everything done and get out of here at a, at a reasonable hour. So, that's the plan. Um, minutes? Everyone read the minutes? Is there a motion to accept this?
I will make that motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Uh, just a question. In the procedure for alderman appointment, it says manager Harley advised that, uh, it says statute, but I thought it was.
City charter.
It's, it's statute.
It, it, is it?
It's statute. It's not about the posting forth, how shall I point forth with?
Yeah.
That's statute.
Oh, statute, okay. I, I didn't know whether it was charter or statute, so. It, it did say statute. That's the only question I have.
Okay. Anyone else? One in favor?
Aye.
All right. Warrants were presented. In the amount of...
It's, it's a little more than that.
Oh, with the DF, we've got the new ones.
Just a little bit more. There's four or five bills there. I got six today.
Um, does anyone have any questions or comments on the warrants in advance of a motion? No motion? Oh, good. Okay. I saw one of the biggest ones is fuel oil. That's public works.
The champagne, that's actually all of them.
Oh, it is.
Champagne oil, that is all, all departments. Uh, so there's a breakdown there. Police always wins, very short. Police wins, uh, and then public works is, is second. And then really, obviously the fire department doesn't do that much. But I would say roughly, you know, fifty-five percent of that bill is police. Forty, forty percent is public works and the rest is, or...
And the audit trucking, is that the big truck for winter snow removal?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is that just an annual lease?
It's a, it's by the hour. Uh, the, the vehicle is parked on our property and audit trusts us to keep track of the hours that we use it. And so, uh, Patrick or Jim, they have a clipboard down there as to how many hours. Uh, how much was the bill?
Twelve fifty.
So, we budgeted ten thousand dollars and that was really, we never, we never used to budget anything. We used to bring our snow down to zig and carry it sixteen times before I finally got rid of it. So, anyway, that's...
No, you left it right there.
Yeah, we are. So, anyway, the audit, uh, so that's what we do is we budget for that truck and we budgeted ten thousand dollars and so...
See, I thought that ten thousand dollars was for the truck and overtime for, for backhoes and bucket loaders and stuff. Okay.
Yeah, no, no. Uh, it could be, it could be, Bill. I, I, like, if we had to rent, uh, hire somebody else to bring in a tandem, another truck or some, we could, we would use that line item, but there wasn't any, any of that to happen.
Well, that's good.
I think winter's over.
If you live in Colorado.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, warrants are all set then. Everyone signed them. Um, Jim Moulton. Jim is the head of Addison County Transit Resources and...
I, I wanna apologize. I, you know, Jim and I had about six or seven emails there and, and at the end, we got it, I got him coordinated, we flip flopped around the Vixby and we finally got him squared away to come here. And after all that, I forgot about why he was coming here to begin, in the beginning, and I neglected to include a copy of the email that I put in front of you.
It is March nineteenth.
And it deals with, you know, some history to their funding. And we typically have actor come in and do a report anyway, but this year, uh, it is also about, it's really about money. And for me as, as manager, I don't, you know, any of these so-called discretionary allocations. It's, it's a council thing. It's not a, it's not a my thing. Nothing, don't take this personally, Jim. It's just not my, it's not my thing.
I haven't passed, so I won't now.
Okay.
So, what's the best way? Should I move a chair up to...
Um, yeah, I think so. You know, that's fine. I mean, probably that camera can catch you where you are, so maybe this is okay if you feel like you're cozy enough.
Sure.
So, um, I wanted to provide you with a, uh, written report also. I think we all have copies of your annual report, so...
Oh, great. So, um, uh, as Mel mentioned, this is essentially a two-point presentation. One is to talk about the actual services that we provide to Virgens. And then the other is to, um, make our request for, um, city council or city support for, uh, the fiscal year fourteen budget. So, uh, we have a, two primary, um, services overall that we provide. One is called our dial ride system, which is often what we call our invisible system. It's done primarily by volunteer drivers. These are, uh, people who use their own cars, uh, and they go out and pick up people, uh, either around the city or around the area. And take them to, uh, primarily medical appointments, but it can also be grocery shopping, it can also be, um, uh, meal sites, um, things like that, um, to elderly services. And, uh, it's invisible because it's, it's people driving their own cars and we reimburse them mileage. Uh, but that comes under, um, primarily Medicaid services and, um, a grant through the agency of transportation for elders and persons with disabilities. Vulnerable populations, people who can't drive themselves, either because they are, um, they've lost the ability to drive, they have a disability, or they can't afford a car and can't afford to drive. Uh, but they need to go places that the bus system doesn't go. Um, the bus system is the obvious, um, portion of actor services because it's very visible. Um, we have the Triton shuttle, which, uh, as you know, connects Middlebury, uh, and Bristol and New Haven with Virgens. Um, that runs, uh, five-hour loops every morning, five-hour loops every afternoon. Um, and, uh, just as a point of interest, one of the things that we're looking at, um, on a bigger scale is, um, to fill the gap in the middle of the day. Um, right now, the morning service ends about ten thirty, the afternoon begins at one thirty, so there's about a three-hour gap of, of, uh, no service. And we're looking to the whole system and see how we can reallocate some of the hours that aren't being well utilized. It could be whether it's on the Middlebury shuttle or the Snowball shuttle or other places that we can fill in the gaps, um, to enhance the service. Cause the growth on it has been, um, amazing. Uh, there's also the, um, Saturday Burlington link. Um, we provide that service. There's also Monday through Friday service to Burlington, uh, provided by CCTA. We partner with them. They do, again, the Monday through Friday, we do the Saturday, but we do a lot of co-marketing, um, and work together on what the stops are, what the schedules are. Um, the, uh, most of the federal and state grants that we get require a twenty percent local match. They're eighty-twenty grants. You may be familiar with those through some of the municipal grants that you get. Um, just at least the concept of matching funds. Um, for the time that I've been at actor, which is now, um, a little over eleven years, we've had a policy of seeking, um, only five percent from municipalities. And working to provide the other fifteen percent of that match through other, um, fundraising efforts, whether it's, um, United Way, whether it's the college, whether it's businesses, advertising, general donations. We feel it's our responsibility to, um, find other sources and not rely just on the municipalities. But as a reference point, um, there are other municipalities or counties around the state that have higher portions. Um, now you know, Washington County, um, gets fifteen percent of their local match from municipalities. And Chittney County actually gives the full twenty percent, so. Um, but we've just felt, um, again, for the time that I've been there, that it's important for the organization to seek out other sources and not continue to put, um, undue pressure on property taxes. Um, you hopefully are aware, um, either through the annual report or through, um, articles in the paper about our, uh, community transportation center. We, uh, it's a little over four million dollar project. Um, we've raised all the money, um, outside of municipalities. We've asked nothing from the municipalities to support that project. Um, we've been very fortunate to get, um, federal funding and state funding and a lot of private funding for that too, through foundations. It's really exciting. Um, I don't know, um, I know Rennie's been there. I think Mel, you stopped by. I'm not sure anybody else has been by our actual offices, but, um, for the past eleven years, we've been in a space that's actually smaller than this room. And we've tripled in size during that time. Uh, and so, um, we are more than bursting at the seams and we've never been able to do our own maintenance on our vehicles, uh, or take care of them. We've had to rely on, um, other shops, which are great, but at the same time, it's a tremendous amount of work to get them back and forth. And this center is gonna transform our ability to provide service. Um, it's gonna save money in both operations and in purchasing the buses, which we can then put into service also. So, um, it's, uh, really pretty exciting and, uh, as I said, there's no local tax impact to, uh, that facility. Uh, the charts that I provide there, uh, the first one is about ridership and, um, I wanted to provide both the dial ride program and then the Triton and the Saturday Burlington. And you can see that the trend, um, over the, uh, five-year period, um, three years of actual data through FY twelve, um, FY thirteen projected data, um, based on information through March. And then, um, based on the current growth rate, what it would look like in FY fourteen. You can see that the dial ride program, um, uh, compared to FY ten has grown fourteen percent or compared to FY eleven is ten percent. The Triton is where, um, the really big jump has been. Um, you may recall that, um, in fiscal year ten, we, that's when we went to an expansion to the current service. Before that, we only had, um, service every two hours instead of hourly. So, ridership has gone up, um, at a faster rate than the number of hours we provided, so our productivity has gone up. Uh, but again, it's a tremendous, uh, growth rate in ridership there. And then the Saturday Burlington service, um, as I mentioned, has also seen, uh, a tremendous amount of growth. Um, people in Virgens are really using it. It's interesting to me, that piece, because the original impetus for that service was through the college. The students want to get to Burlington. But there's actually more community ridership on that route than there is student ridership, which I think is a great, um, example of, you know, one particular group or entity can come forth and have an idea that then everybody benefits from. So, um, the students actually provided the local match, uh, funding for that particular service. Uh, and then I provide a little history of the, uh, support from the city. Uh, the top line being the actual number of dollars provided over, um, fiscal years ten through thirteen. And then, um, the requests that we're making for, um, fiscal year fourteen. I wanted to provide a little background. Uh, we use what's, uh, called a fair share formula and I, I apologize, I didn't actually bring that spreadsheet. Um, you may have seen it in the past. But it essentially distributes the total amount of local match that, um, actor needs to support all of its services amongst the municipalities, based on their fair share, which is, um, partially based on total population. And then population of, um, transit-dependent, um, people. So, it's really focused on, um, you know, if Middlebury has a greater share of elders or persons with disabilities, they end up paying a greater share of that. And then there's also, um, a factor of how much service is any municipality actually getting. So, um, for example, Addison doesn't have bus service, so we don't ask them to pay for a portion of the bus service. Virgens gets bus service, but not at the same rate that Middlebury gets it. So, they're paying, we're asking you for a fair share that represents your population, you're transit-dependent, and how much service you're getting. I remember when I started early on, one of the questions that I often got from any, um, select board or city council was, so what are the other towns paying, you know? Because there's, there is a, a, a need for equity. And so, we've, we came up with a way of creating that equity. Um, going back to, uh, fiscal year eleven, that was, um, the five percent, uh, number for that year. Um, during the difficult, you know, um, economy, we actually made, uh, another board decision. Where we said, even though that no longer represented a full five percent share, we didn't go to any municipality and ask for any increase. We left it flat for those two years. Um, but we now feel that, uh, it's time for us to, to go back to the five percent, um, goal. We actually were successful at town meeting with, um, all the other municipalities supporting, um, going to the new five percent number. So, um, you know, Middlebury is providing, Bristol, all the other municipalities.
So, there's no pressure on us then?
None whatsoever. If you don't wanna keep up with the Joneses, you don't have to. Um, and I thought it would also be useful to, uh, provide a perspective of what is that investment on a per-trip basis and per-ride basis. As you can see then, um, you know, in FY ten, it was roughly thirty-five cents per trip. Um, stayed the same in FY eleven. Even though there was more actual dollars going into it, we provided more rides. So, the cost per ride stayed the same. And then, as we didn't ask for increases in the ridership going up, kept going up, that cost per trip went down in twelve and thirteen. Fourteen would represent an increase in the per-trip over thirteen, but really putting it back just at the FY twelve. So, it's still below, um, roughly by six to seven percent over where it was in ten and eleven. So, um, we're getting more productive. We're getting more cost-effective on a per-trip basis. And that's throughout the system. It's not just Virgens. But, um, I thought that would be, um, just a, a useful perspective for you as well, so. Um, and I, you know, it's interesting that you brought up the, um, fuel bill because, uh, clearly that's one of our largest expenses also. Having seen fuel prices rise by more than fifty percent since FY eleven. Uh, you know, we really are in a place where we need to be able to pay those bills and, and, um, you know, ideally seeking that support from all the municipalities, um, bringing us back up to the five percent, so. So, that's my presentation in a nutshell. I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Mel?
Uh, one thing I don't wanna make a big deal about this, Jim, but I was running the report. The, the FY ten number that says forty-six fifty, I think you'll find that we paid six thousand dollars that year. And the reason why I remember it is because you, you guys came in, I'm gonna say in July of two thousand and nine, and I, and let's say we had been budgeting roughly, you know, forty-three hundred, forty-six hundred, whatever it was. And you had applied for, you had applied for a grant and you were looking for the city to provide an additional thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars on a hope, on a hopeful grant. And I think the board said, you know, we're not gonna budget money, we're not gonna tax our taxpayers in essence on a grant that you may not get. And so, what the city council did was, was nothing. They didn't budget anything and off, but wished you luck. And, and, uh, and I think Diane Lamphers said that, you know, if, if they do get the grant and, uh, uh, and, and if the city's not in a position to help support, then they would get, get the money from other businesses. Well, and so that was kind of July. Well, in December of two thousand and nine, the grant did come through.
Right.
And, uh, obviously, we didn't bud, we didn't budget any money and, uh, there was some money raised. Anyway, the city, uh, in essence, overspent that line item in the, in the budget by thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. So, in FY ten, on our end, I know that we's paid six thousand dollars. I know that's what we paid. It's not a big deal. I just wanna let you know.
No, no, but it paid him dearly.
So, the point, the point I'm getting at is if that number is six, the subsidy is wrong.
True.
Okay? So, that subsidy's not, it's not thirty-five cents. It's, it's something else.
Yeah, it's probably, you know, closer to forty or forty something. You're right. You're, uh, because we actually ended up starting those services in that March. So, there was a handful of months in that fiscal year. You're right. I do remember now that, um, you were able to work with the city council and find some funds in a, on a lesser spent line item to support that. So, I apologize for, for what's happening.
Okay. Well, do you have any questions?
Nope.
No? Rennie, how about you?
Nope. I was on...
I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait on you.
I was on the board, so I know a lot about act.
So, you know. Randy, how about you?
No, I'm cool.
Randy?
Yeah.
I don't have any questions. I just wanna say that my son, uh, is legally blind, doesn't have a school, uh, doesn't have a driver's license. And actor and CC, um, both of these services have been a real lifeline for him, not to mention a time saver for us, when we don't have to go to Burlington and pick him up with his friends. So, I, I, I mean, certainly from my point of view, we really, really appreciate, uh, having that available.
Great, thanks.
I have a couple of questions and I would love to come down and see your building and meet with you, just to get a, because I don't know a lot about what, what you do. I mean, I've heard about you. I've read the report. And just so I can get, get an idea, I mean, I noticed that like ninety-eight percent, eighty-eight percent of your revenues are state and federal. What, what, what do you see in the future of that? I mean, do you see the way things are going in, in the federal government and the state government with deficits and is, is any of that funding in jeopardy? And if it is, what are your plans?
So, it's, I get that question actually over the years.
A lot.
Yeah, a lot. So, um, having been in it for eleven years, uh, what I've seen is that, um, public transportation and transportation in general, uh, it's one of those, um, aspects that's, or, or programs. It seems to be bipartisan much more than any other program. So, while, uh, there is always risk in, to some degree, in government funding. And obviously, there's a lot of rhetoric that has gone on, um, particularly at the federal level about, uh, you know, what to support and what not to support. The, the actual history as it has played out is that the funds have always been there and have increased. And the most recent example I would have of that is, at the federal level, they typically have what is called a six-year authorization bill for transportation. Because they know that you need time to plan your transportation projects and so they can't do it on an annualized basis. And so, uh, the last, um, authorization bill actually ran out in two thousand and nine. Of course, Congress wasn't ready to do anything about it, so they kept, uh, continuing resolutions. But, um, in, uh, let's see, we're in two thousand and thirteen now. So, a little over a year ago, the rhetoric was really high about, um, you know, huge cuts coming in transportation. They were talking about anywhere up to twenty percent. Well, they ended up passing a two-year authorization bill, which actually included a two percent increase. So, despite the volatile rhetoric that goes on, particularly again at the federal level, there is a real, um, clear understanding of the, um, the fact that transportation is infrastructure. You can't do most anything else without it. If you don't have roads, if you don't have bridges, if you don't have public transportation, you can't get people to work. You can't get goods transferred. You can't get anywhere. And so, if you can't get anywhere, you can't do anything. And there's a, you know, a large proportion of the population that really relies on public transportation. It makes an enormous difference. Um, one of the things that I, I've always loved about actor, uh, is the, the breadth of impact we have in terms of it's, it's an economic impact in getting people to work and getting customers to businesses. Um, there's, uh, social impact, um, getting people out and about who can't otherwise get there. There's a medical impact and healthcare impact. And there's an environmental impact, taking cars off the road. So, what that translates into is, no matter what persuasion any politician might be, whether it's progressive or Democrat or Republican or, or Tea Party, everybody understands some aspect of the value of public transportation. And in the end, they understand that they need to be invested in. And if it's not, you know, they're, they're, they're shooting themselves in the foot. And so, um, you know...
So, you feel, you feel good. You don't feel like you're at risk in any?
No, I mean, I'm constantly thinking about it. I'm constantly working. I mean, I, one of my roles actually is to function as the chair of the statewide transit association. So, I'm up in Montpelier a lot every, uh, spring and I'm talking to the legislative committees, both senate and house. Uh, and it, it's an education process. It's continuing to educate them about, um, what we do and how we do it. And, uh, and they get it. They understand it. And, you know, they're, you know, I mean, we're talking about the gas tax now. Of course, that pushes a button to a lot of people. But at the same time, you know, they, it's like something's gotta be done because if it's not, you know, we're gonna get a lot more than twenty thousand people saying, my bridge needs to be fixed and my road needs to be fixed. I mean, we know in this room better than anybody about bridges. Um, and you saw the story, you know, again, in, in our annual report, harkening back to actor's role in, in making a difference when the champagne bridge grows. So, um, you know, again, I pay attention to it a lot and I educate a lot, but at the same time, the track record has been that when push comes to shove, people understand the need to invest in transportation, so.
I, um, I have another question about funding for municipalities, but I think your fair share formula answered that. The only other thing, I mean, you, this report is not, the finances are pretty limiting here. Do you have like a full financial report?
Sure.
I mean, could I get it online or pick it up at your office?
Sure. I mean, I could, um, I can email you our last audit if that's useful to you. I mean, that's really the fullest level of financial detail. Um, or, you know, you could pick up a hard copy, whatever.
Okay, okay. That's fine. I mean, I assumed there was something. I just didn't know where it was.
Yeah, okay. I'll set it.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Citizen comments. Anybody here as a citizen that wants to comment? And Mel's shaking her head no. Lynn, you wanna make a comment?
Yes, I do wanna make a comment about Otter Creek. And I think that I wanna make sure that the board is aware that the bill that's gonna affect the shorelines of all waterways is gonna affect the dock area and our septic area. And everything that we own as a city along Otter Creek. And I think that as a board, you need to be aware that that's happening.
It, this bill won't affect Otter Creek, but the plan is that in the next three to five years, it probably will.
Will.
Yeah, I think you're right. That's what I've read too. And it's a, it's a big concern, um, particularly if we wanna do any improvements. I mean, I think things that floods, we, we can't really do much anyway, but it is something that we need to be aware of.
Need to be, yeah, on top of that.
Okay, um, candidates. I think we kind of decided that you guys would have a few minutes to just, you know, say why you'd like the position, maybe answer a few questions if, if people have specific questions. Um, I think we all, or most of us know you both and, you know, fairly well, but I, I think it would be nice just to let you, you, we got letters. We all got copies of the letters. You read it and so on. So, if that's okay, I, let Lynn go first?
Well, I said pretty much everything about myself and why I wanted to be in the letter, but I repeat that. And, um, I was very disappointed in the police station not passing, um, for a very, I understand why and a lot of reasons. But I think taxpayers are, um, conscious of our taxes and, and they are rising. But at the same time, to, um, to have an extension of a department in, in the city of Virgens, as I said in my letter, we have outstanding schools. We have a wonderful fire department. We have a great city, um, crew. And I think the police station deserves the same, uh, respect as all the other departments do. The other thing is that I probably could bring to the table is, um, common sense. And I think sometimes that's, you know, it's a, it's, it's something that you can't teach someone. Or maybe dad did, I don't know. But, uh, I think I have common sense. And I think that's one of the things that maybe in making decisions, there's a different side of things. That maybe just somebody who's lived here for a long time can, um, participate in. And I think I'm a great mediator. And, um, again, I think that's, could be helpful at some point in time. I've always lived here. This, I've lived between Virgens and Peanton my whole life. Virgens is my heart. And that's one of the reasons I'm writing.
Um, let's have Peter speak and then if there are questions, we can ask Peter. Peter, you're up.
Sure. I'm a known entity on the board, all of you except Lowell. I've worked with you, um, in this specific arena around the issues that, you know, you're dealing with every day. You know, I'm gonna come across. I'm straightforward. Um, I say what I mean politely, but I don't necessarily beat around the bush. Um Mel has certainly been on the on the end of a few of those questions and and things like that, but I I think it's been a productive um productive role on the board. Um one of the other things that um I like to explore issues, I like to ask questions, um I don't take the first answer, I like to think about things, do my homework before I come here so that I can be prepared to ask questions. Um for example, if I'd been on the board tonight, I would've read the report like you guys have, if I'd gotten it ahead of time so that I was prepared to um talk about it. I have, I think, a unique perspective in one sense. I've been in Vergens long enough and my association with somebody who basically grew up here all her life um gives me a perspective on Vergens, enough of a perspective so I understand what's going on. But my unique perspective is that I didn't go to school here. I have lived all over Vermont, so I have perspective of different towns and how different entities um you know work on things. When I was in Milton, I was on the school board. When I was in St. Albans, I was on the development, well, equivalent of the development review board. So I have a perspective that is outside of Vergens, which allows me to come in and ask the dumb questions because I don't know all the history sometimes. And sometimes those dumb questions lead to um a different approach to things. So that's certainly something that I would I would bring here. Um and without going on too long, I think that I bring um a lengthy and varied experience in terms of work and life that is board. I have had a variety of work experiences which sometimes come out of the blue as to having an impact here. I worked for IRS, so I have a little bit of tax background, anybody gonna talk about stuff like that? I worked for US Immigration for a period of time. Um you know, and these aren't necessarily everyday things, but they they form the background sorts of things. I was in education all the way from primary school all the way up to um college, the college level, at all those different um experiences. And and currently, you know Lynn spoke about being a mediator, um that's been my job for the last um twenty-odd years. As a HR person and as a union representative, I'm always in the middle um of conflicts between employees and and management. Mike and I were actually talking about some private business of around that sort of thing of where and I was saying that I jumped in the middle of things, I don't like to resolve things always uh always legally. And that has been a skill, that HR background has been something that I definitely used over the um past couple of years, during the two years that I was on the board, so I bring that here. I believe in transparency. I I hate the concept of a executive session even though I know why they need um and participate in it a couple. But I really, I don't, that's not my, I prefer to go, you know, open with things. And um I guess I'd I'd kind of end there, I really would like to be back on the board because I really enjoyed my two years of of working with you all.
Thank you. Um Lowell, do you have any particular questions of either candidate? No, how about you, Randy?
No, I don't.
No?
No, no, Joe?
Um well, somebody's gonna ask, no. Uh Andy asked us when we in the candidates um sort of statements in the newspaper, sort of what what are your short and long-term goals as a as a council member? And I guess I would just maybe briefly ask you, you kinda gave a little bit of your kind of vision of how you would work on the board, but didn't really say what your short and long-term goals may be uh for the city and and as a a council member. So I I I guess I would maybe just ask that briefly, I mean, yeah, see.
You're asking me?
Yeah, sure.
Um but this is a one-year position, um and I really felt that this was a position where you could actually see how the board actually runs. Peters had that experience, I have not, although I've attended quite a few meetings. But my uh immediate goal was to help with the fire station, or the police station. I wanted to um see some restorations of the signs coming in and out of town. They were um artwork that were done by citizens of our town and they're getting so they're worn. And I think that those need to be preserved. Um and I own a business on Main Street, so I like to see that the Main Street stays strong and that there's some kind of economic development that continues to happen, whether it's through the partnership, through an individual. Um I think those are all important things. Long-term, it's hard to say without participating in what happens per year. You know, long-term is um, who knows? It could be another new fire station, it could be a lot of things. I don't anticipate to know what that could be, um but the fact that I've been here so long is I have no intention of leaving. So if it seems to be um a position that could still use my help a year from now, I would probably consider it again, but I wanna do that year first.
Great.
One of my objectivity, I was speaking kind of about having a different sense of objectivity. I don't come into this role with a list of things that I think should be accomplished because I see that as being an ongoing active sort of thing as issues come up before the board. There are a couple of things that I would like to concentrate on. I mean, obviously, the fiscal thing, even in the last two years, has tightened up and Mel is an incredible fiscal officer. But I think that we're gonna be asked to make some really hard decisions financially, um and I'm just seeing that coming over the last two years, the the squeeze is there, so. Um and that involves asking a lot of questions about finances, about different alternative ways of of funding, you know, things for the town. And um the other thing, just in terms of how the city operates, um I I would like to continue to be involved in policy and procedure sorts of things. I mean, tonight, you're gonna be talking about the water tower fund, you know, potentially. And those sorts of things are are things that I'm interested in working on to kind of build that solid foundation. So that Vergens keeps heading in the direction, I mean, this is a great place to live and it's wonderful, it's heading in some great directions and I wanna be supportive of that.
Thanks. Anybody else? I have similar questions, so I guess I don't have one, but uh I think we wanted to go home regular business, we can be, you guys can wait around. We also, I mean, I'm more than happy, you know, if you wanna go home, I'll can call you in an hour and a half or whenever and let you know the results if, whatever you wanna do, um.
I think it's important for us to hear the discussion, no matter who goes on next time, to know what this discussion is from this meeting to the next one. I think that's the reason to stay.
Okay, great. Okay, um. Should we water tower or police department?
Well, you mentioned about seeing.
Well, the yeah, the senior alderman, I think that what Randy and I talked, Randy asked me, you know, what are we gonna do? And I said, I I think, as I said last meeting, we're gonna wait until the appointment is made for the the vacancy and then we'll, you know, bring it up probably in in two weeks at the next meeting. So I think that's that's the best we can do. I think since Chris is here and the chief's here, they we can talk about the police station, they can then go home if they choose to and then we can get onto the water tower thing, which is more of a of a council business. So last week, last meeting, we talked about um the design, we talked about the site, we talked about uh the the costs, we talked about funding options in terms of the bond and the water tower fund. There have been some small changes, I believe, to the floor plan, um we now have a more formal site plan. There were some questions that have been raised concerning the design. I guess, do you wanna?
Well, one of the things, uh Bill, I just wanna mention, you know, obviously at the last meeting, there was some discussion about expanding the police station committee and and you know, Randy and I chatted about this a little bit and I did, you know, give Randy a list of names. You know, one of the one of the problems is is, you know, we're still faced with this issue of if this is where this if this is where the police though, if that's the desire is that location, we just can't continue to wait. Now, I will tell you, and I and I and I really don't think that I'm an all-embarrassing Jerry Stagg, I can tell you Jerry Stagg to me is the de facto uh uh I'm pretty sure he voted no, I mean, just let me just say that, I'm pretty, I think I I think uh Jerry would agree with me 'cause he he has, Jerry has been to meetings here and he's expressed some concerns. I've been on the phone with Jerry and and followed up with an email and I I think I shared it, I think I put it in in your packet and if I didn't, it's it's out there uh with the uh with the information. You know, Jerry has good questions, you know, right? And uh and uh I think when George and I see these kinds of questions, we thought, hmm, I'll be darned. The uh, God, I can't believe somebody, that's right, that really isn't, it there's George and I are so close to this project, there's things that we don't, we don't, they're just like automatic, you know, this is what this is why this is the way it is. To somebody who's not close to this, it it's not obvious to them to them whatsoever. And so it just shows that we need to continue to educate people as to what we have and really and what we're what we're lacking and what we're uh what we need. So uh I'm not done with Jerry, I I do uh I'm gonna get back to him on some of these some of these items that have come up and they'll they'll be probably discussed and part during this meeting. But I think it's best, Bill, to have Chris uh, you know, talk about the the this revised plan
Yep, yeah.
that we've come up with.
One question, Chris, relative to that, I mean, we, I think if we decide to go to a may vogue, there's still hope that the building could be built in this calendar year.
Right.
But in terms of small revisions, you know, whether it's as a result of of public comment or the chief or Melvin, you at at what point do you do you need to have a finished plan in order to start doing working drawings and you know, actually start doing some some, you know, concrete work and so on? I mean, I it it, you know, are we looking at a at a timeframe of, you know, the the vote's gonna be, you know, five weeks away potentially? Obviously, you need to break ground soon, I mean, I I guess I'm just curious as to how much time do we have to make this these final decisions?
That's a great question, uh Bill. I think that um we would be looking at picking up the drawings immediately after the bond gets approved and working through final design and engineering. Some of the longer lead time items are the permitting issues, not and they should not be significant on this, you know, for both the building and the site. But those are those are the activities that we actually jump on most immediately and that is to get um an actual actual professional survey done of the site and then incorporate that into our civil engineering. So that really is the primary driver is some of the site and civil engineering. We would be looking at um essentially doing this as a fast track to get that construction as early as we can. We think that we can mobilize on-site um as early as September, the beginning of September. We might be able to pull that back into August, that would be the 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 ultimate um desire to pull that back a little bit. Um but basically, the there is still the, you know, all of the engineering, structural mechanical engineering to be done. So to answer your question about when those changes can still occur, um they would happen immediately after um the the bond gets approved. And we can still, within the overall building footprint, we can make minor changes, you know, rotating doors and things like that. And um even if there were some space reconfigurations, we could do that very quickly as well. But we'd be looking at um, as I said, starting construction either in August or at the latest September and that would run um we believe approximately five months, so it'd get you into, you know, January, around there, December, January.
Okay. Randy?
Oh, I'm sorry, man. Go ahead. Are you building this building at the right time of year, both weather and cost-wise? You may wanna consider looking at the other factors of when you'll get the best price from the the bidders, uh the subcontractors, just an idea.
Do you have an answer to that?
Sure, we we do, we did consider that, I'm like, and um we believe that um there, based on the way that this year is tracking in terms of the projects that are out there, it's still in our region, it's still a a very competitive market. You bring up a point that it's the end, kind of the end of the summer, but oftentimes for a project of this size and scale, we feel that there should be still very good subcontractor response. You you did bring up a very good point also about winter conditions, that we would want to get the building erected as quickly as possible and enclosed so that those those winter heating components um are are minimized to the extent that we can. And that's I'm saying, fast-tracking it on the front end as best we can and hitting the permitting component as the really the critical path would be the most important.
You didn't really give us a hard date
Yep.
of when changes cannot even after that point.
Sure.
I would kind of like, is it June, July?
Yep. I would say the first week in June.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chris, why don't you just give the board and the and the guests a a summary of, you know, the the new plan, the site plan and any changes that have occurred in the last couple of weeks?
Sure, sure. Just so the folks know, I handed out uh your own versions pretty much of what Chris has there on his board, except that what you have is one additional. And the the last sheet that you have is a copy of the plan that got voted on in March. So that you can, you know, compare uh what was what was voted on then, then compared to uh this revised plan. They're both, they're both are at the exact same scale, so it's not, there's uh it is truly reflective of the reduction in the uh in the size of the building.
Sure, thanks, Mel. So, um as Mel mentioned, we've reduced the building by approximately fourteen hundred square feet. The um the right-hand side of the floor plan has remained
Left-hand side.
The left-hand side of the floor plan, right-hand, uh is has remained fairly well intact. Uh where we maintained the sally port, um the mechanical space in the two holding cells and the booking area. So that, the the overall width of the building uh remained um the same, we reduced the overall length. We also, as Mel had mentioned in our in our previous meeting, we've reduced uh the number of offices by two across the front of the building. The chief's office remains, we have a computer and IT, you know, phone room located adjacent to the lobby. What has happened is the sergeant and the detective's offices have been removed and they've been combined into a larger um workspace, which is also combined then very efficiently with the officers' um spaces. So that is, that that space will also um double as, you know, emergency um situation room where they can gather and and plan um and, you know, troubleshoot certain situations. So that has, you know, operationally, I think Chief would say that while the detective's office has been sacrificed, there is the benefit of having, you know, the and the efficiency of having those spaces combined. Um we still have the public lobby, um which has been reduced slightly in size, um a public restroom and a meeting space. Off of the meeting space, we have storage uh locations and a janitor's closet, um which, you know, many of those spaces did exist in the in the prior plan. The um dispatch has been eliminated and re- um essentially replaced with this record storage space located right here. You will have the ability, if someone from the public enters the building, um and an officer is on duty, they can come out and be addressed at a secure window which um faces the lobby. You can see that at the bottom, located at the bottom of the record storage space. Um we're trying as best we can with all of these spaces to get multiple functions. The in the earlier um versions, there was actually a briefing room, which also doubled as a a space that um the officers could actually have lunch and so on. That has now been combined, there is a small, very small kitchenette in the multipurpose room, uh that you see in the in the uh corner of the multipurpose room. That has now been combined, there is a small, very small kitchenette in the multipurpose room, that you see in the, in the corner of the multipurpose room. We're trying to gain efficiencies through multiple uses, multiple functions. You also notice, I think we talked about this at our last meeting, that the, the actual circulation area, the area dedicated to the general yellow color has been reduced in the overall plan, and that has allowed us to maximize the use of operational square footage dedicated to Chief's, you know, running of the facility. The other significant change is that the evidence garage, if you will, evidence storage has been removed. That was previously, as Chief had mentioned, that was a drive-in, if, if a car was taken into custody, you could drive the entire vehicle in, make it secure, and take the proper time necessary to, to, you know, process the vehicle. In this case, if they have that situation, they're gonna have to double up and use the Sally port as that function. Otherwise, evidence can come in through a proper chain of custody, through these evidence lockers, and then processed in the evidence storage area. So that has, has been shifted from the right-hand side of the building over to the left. We still have a juvenile holding room, which was, a juvenile room, which was in the previous plan. The armory and the uniform spaces adjacent to the officer's work, workroom were also in the prior plan, as was the witness, the victim and witness interview room. The two, I'm kind of, you know, making my way around the plan, the two suspect interview rooms were also part of the previous plan, as were the two locker rooms serving ten men officers and three female officers. So those are the primary changes. In terms of the site plan, we've reduced the overall paving, which has helped the site cost come down. And in fact, even since, even in a recent refinement, we have further reduced the parking by eliminating a somewhat unnecessary loop that in the prior plan allowed us to get into the evidence processing garage. So we've kind of tightened that up to the extent that we can. We have, as Mel had mentioned, we now have the more accurate, this isn't a survey, but it's a more accurate rendition of the actual property line that exists out there. This image gives you a sense of the overall layout, kind of looking down into the building. And the bottom image, the exterior elevation, takes in, we've reduced approximately twenty feet from the overall length of the building. Those are the primary changes, and that's the, the overall layout of the building. I think we mentioned last time, the feeling is that it is, while there, there were compromises made in this reduction, it still is a, it's highly efficient and from an operational standpoint, it's, it will serve Chief and, and his staff effectively.
I think Chris forgot to mention that the fitness.
Oh!
Yes. Yeah, just a small, small point. Actually, it's in the basement. Anybody have any questions or comments, Joe?
I have a question on that, on the site plan, what, what, what does the smaller dotted line represent?
That's just a setback.
It's a twenty-five foot setback.
Oh, okay.
So you can't build in the setback, parking is okay in the setback areas, Joe, but, but no building could go in there.
Ziggy, question?
Yes, I have a question for the chief. Now, I brought this up before, but that's when we were at a meeting over at the, this has to do, when I went down to the state police barracks, and I told, I asked you about the Sally port, you know, was out back, and then when you first came in, there was a, a holding room, and then there was the, the booking room. But right next door to it was the detective or the officer's workplace, right next door, and I told you there was a window in there, and I think it's one-sided.
It's not one-sided.
Is it one-sided?
No, ma'am.
He said, yeah, so I don't know. But anyways, there was a window there.
It's not. I'm good, but I don't have x-ray booth.
So when I went into that, when we were in there, they also had like a microphone or something that you actually could turn on to hear what was going into the, what they were doing in the booking room. Plus, they could also look through and see what was going on in there. So, when we were talking, I asked him, and I said, so, is there a reason why this is this way? And he more or less said that it was like a backup system, so if there was any, any problems there, and there they could, even having the microphone on that they could pick out and they could tell sometimes by somebody's tone or voice that there's gonna be a problem. They would be there within three, three seconds, they could go right, just go through the door and then go right in there.
Well, we're not, this, this building is not so big that it's gonna take me any length of time for me to get from the patrol room, or an officer to get from the patrol room.
Alright, but what I'm asking, excuse me, what I'm asking, when they're up here in the booking room, and now, and before the other plan, that's why I asked, but they were a little closer. Now the officer's and the workplace is way down the other end, and the booking room is up on the other end.
Right.
Okay. So how are you gonna know if there's a problem? Can you, I mean, just tell me.
No, there's gonna be a monitor in there.
A monitor.
You have all the rooms, there's, there's certain rooms in the building that are gonna have closed, closed circuit TVs, and there'll be a monitor that covers anything that's going on inside the booking room. And if an officer is in the patrol room, let's say we have somebody in custody, we process that person, they're sitting in the cell, and we're waiting for the sheriff's department to show up to pick them up, to take them to Chittenden County Correctional Center, or if we're going to lodge the person, we'll be able to monitor what's going on in that booking room through that closed circuit TV, at standard procedure for all the different police stations. If you look, if you were to go out in the front where the dispatch office is for the state police, they have the same system. I personally, and a lot of people also, feel I do not want that window there. You can say it's, it's a, it's a one-way window, but I can look right in there, I can see it, it's not one-way, okay?
But I don't even care about the window, I just mentioned that, I'm concerned of the location where the officers are compared to the booking room. That's my concern.
It's, it's not, it's not that far away, we're not talking about a long distance.
When you say booking though, Zig, I mean, obviously, an officer is booking somebody, are you talking about the distance to the cell?
What I'm talking about, yeah, is like, they made the comment that they could be in there within three seconds. Now the room is over here, so you're coming down.
Be, who could be in where?
My, the officer's workspace, where it went down there, could be right into that, right into the area within three seconds if they had a problem.
I think she's referring to the backup.
The location, yes, the backup.
Yeah, yeah.
And the backup was, I mean, that's what it was, I mean, that's what they told me, I'm just explaining it.
And, and each, 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 I guess each department, each facility has their own feelings on that, but I don't think it's a compromise for safety, because there's gonna be an officer in there, officer does his booking, there's nobody wandering around, and they go in the cell.
No, but if, what if this person needed help, and I, I know you say it's a short distance, but you're definitely just trying to walk through this and making where they're going through. It was take, took me in my mind about five seconds, so you're talking maybe twenty, twenty-five seconds where they could.
But the, but the officer that is booking the person, let's say that there's two people, either one person or two people on duty, they're booking this person and lodging this person, there isn't another person in the patrol room. There isn't a third employee somewhere else that, that you're talking about that needs to be somewhere.
Well, then I need to know this, I mean, this is why I'm asking these questions, so when they're booking, you see there'll be two officers there or whatever, even during the.
Is that the procedure?
There's no difference than like, right now.
Is that the procedure? No, that's why I'm getting this.
If I'm on duty by myself, I'm in the booking room with this person, and like on Mondays, I'm on by myself. I'm in the booking room, and that's where I am, and that's just the way we have to do business, because we don't have two officers on all the time. If there's two officers on, chances are they're doing the booking, or you may have one guy in doing the booking with the, with the person you have in custody, and the other officer is in the patrol room, and he may be doing something, he may be doing arrest reports or something like that. But one of the things that we've looked into, and one of the things we're going to do, is all the, all the access to paperwork can be done right from within that booking room. So somebody will be in there. And that's one, that's one of the, one of the hazards to the job, if you're in there and you're the only guy on, you're, you may have to deal with that eventuality, that there's a problem in there. If there's two guys on, there's chances are there's two guys in the booking room, if there isn't, one guy's pretty close by. And, and if you go to, Middlebury was this, I mean, the New Haven barracks are the same thing, we had an incident last year where a guy got loose, somehow got loose and, and started to try to disarm the state trooper. It's not gonna take as long to get in there, Ziggy, believe me, one of my first, first concern is officer safety, and I'm comfortable with this, with this layout. Closed circuit TV, and somebody's gonna be in there, and like I say, if it's somebody that's bad, that we're really having problems with, there's probably gonna be two officers in there.
There's gonna be.
It's a good question, though, I mean, that's, that's officer safety concern.
That was concerned, yeah.
Could be recorded as well?
Yes, again, one of the things we had to do, when you look at building the facility like this, is you have to look at where are you gonna have your closed circuit TV cameras and where are you gonna have your monitors? And we wanna be able to monitor the, what's going on not only inside the building, but outside the building, and the primary focus for that is gonna be in the patrol room where people are going to be, and the other monitor may be in my office, and that's it.
Yeah, currently, you know, the, the budget is carrying fifteen thousand dollars for security and closed circuit TV. Now, I can tell you that, you know, you know, we're not, we're not waiting for the bond vote to investigate, you know, the cost and how this, you know, how the layout of the security, but, you know, George and I have already talked about that, we do have a preliminary quote, there's more quotes that, that we, we can get to make sure that there are, you know, so that's what that budget allocation was for, Zig, is for closed circuit TV, so that when, when, so that any of the cells, those are all, those are all cameras and, and, and when a patrol officer is there, they'll be able to see that activity.
Same thing with the interview rooms, all the interview rooms will be recorded, both video and audio, the lobby will be recorded. These are all standard procedure for any police facility, you just have that kind of security, and it covers you in cases, any accusations of inappropriate behavior or handling.
Well, I was just concerned, looking at this with all the corridors in between and the doors and stuff, you know, if somebody's getting beaten up, you know, that extra four or five seconds, it could, you'd have to take a few hits longer, you know, where something could be real there. So I said, well, I just thought I'd ask, just to make sure, because I.
Well, yeah, fair, fair question.
Any other questions? Did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I did, there was just a mention of a basement a little while ago.
No, 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 no.
No, no, I just went, it's a slap, I just, I just never.
Yeah, really slap on grade, yeah.
Slap on grade, radiant, radiant heat, no, no.
That's too bad, on radiant heat.
Well, you get to combine.
It's expensive, but it's a wise investment.
I think one, one thing, if I will, that I'm not sure was, was emphasized in, in the last one, but was the, in my mind, the impact that this will have in this area, this part of the Gens. It's, it, I, my feeling is it's going to be a, a significant impact on the gateway from the north into the Gens. Not only, we looked at a number of different sites, as, as you all know, so therefore, the presence, the police presence with a new facility that's prominent and visible, particularly, you know, from the north, it gives a, it's a real, real benefit and attribute.
Ziggy. One other thing down there, and I'm not trying to compare, is that, this, your Sally port. What happens down there is they're all on one heating system? Well, when that Sally port cools down, and then it starts to warm it up again?
Right.
It makes the other part of the building about forty degrees hotter.
There's, so to that point, Zig, there are several zones, because the other thing that happens is that these guys will come in, you know, they'll have several layers, and generally, officers like their environments around sixty-four, sixty-three degrees, whereas, you know, we're, we were to all the customers, they have it around sixty-eight. So that's something that is considered very specifically in police department design.
So then why couldn't they correct that down there, if they, you could do that with the different zones?
To do it afterwards is not that easy, to do it, to plan for it is, is, is simple.
So apparently, they were all on one thermostat or only two thermostats or something down there?
Possibly, I'm, I'm not.
It wouldn't be smarter to have two separate heating systems, one for the Sally port than one for the building?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Yeah, especially as you said, I mean, you open the Sally port door in the winter and it cools, you have the big space.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chief. Um, so now we get down to the nitty-gritty, I guess, in terms of setting a vote date. And this brings up another question, which just occurred in the last couple of days. I received a phone call Monday, from Tom O'Brien at the school board, wanting to know if we had a vote date set. And I said, no, I said, we have, we're looking at a date, we don't have a date. I said, we probably will have a date Tuesday night. I guess they are talking about coming back with a lesser bond for the roof repair and some, I guess cafeteria work. The amount is about two million dollars, I don't know exactly details. And he said, what do you think? I said, I gotta think long and hard. Talked to Mel about it, Mel talked to Joe about it after rec meeting, actually, this was, this had to be Thursday, not Monday, because you guys met on, we met on Friday morning of the rec meeting. And, and I talked to some people, you know, on the school board and so on, and I, I, you know, it's a tough call, I said, you know, I certainly didn't wanna risk having two bond votes piggybacking, because we've worked so hard on this, and, you know, we really feel strongly about it, we made a good effort to, to reduce the bond issue and, and amount and so on. The consensus was that it makes no sense for us to go in May and them to go in June, if they're ready to go now. If they're not ready, then let them go in September. I think we feel like we're ready to go, I mean, it seemed like after the meeting two weeks ago and probably tonight, that we are ready to go. So, my, my sense was that if we were adamant about not sharing a, 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 you know, an election day with them, they probably would, you know, stand down and, and do something themselves shortly thereafter, or if they wanna sell the project or change it later on in the year. But, I don't know. So, I'm just throwing this out here, because obviously, I, I think they would respect our decision if we were very, if, if we, you know, felt very strongly about it. But, Mel, you, I mean, you and I have talked about it a few times, you have, you've kind of had a good thought process, and I, if you wanna share it with the board, that'd be great.
Well, one of the things I, I don't want to, I don't wanna be pushing the, the high school into another hasty vote, but on the other hand, I, I would prefer that, that the votes be held on the same, same day. I, I think that when I look at, you know, certainly, I can tell you, there were people that were, that were upset about having to vote on February sixth and then turning around and having to vote on March sixth, I, I, and I understand where some of the logic was, but I also know that there was people that were upset that they had to come out and have a, go vote a month before the, before town meeting day. So therefore, I think that people, you know, if there's gonna be a vote, they like to come and vote as opposed to voting every month, so that's one thing. Number, number two, I, I think that there is some advantage to having the votes at the same time, because we all know that there's gonna be another bond vote for the school, we know that, whether it's the roof, with the roof in the cafeteria, or roof cafeteria on a term, we know, we know that. I don't, I, I think that the turf track is probably, won't see the light of day again, but I, the, the rest of it, those are gonna come up. And I think that I would prefer that the school, I know they have a meeting coming up on Thursday, I, I hope that people attend that meeting, and I hope that, that, that they do come out with the right project, that obviously needs to, to address the roof. I don't know enough about their other, their other needs.
And I don't either.
But I, I think that it's beneficial to the taxpayers to, to really know what the, what the school is putting out there when they're voting on the police station, as opposed to speculating on what they're gonna be faced with within the next two months. I would rather just stare it head-on and, you know, and know exactly what the tax, the tax impact is. So, that, that's my feeling.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, I don't, you know, if, but again, I don't want the school to, to feel as if they're forced into making a hasty decision and say, well, let's go bond two million dollars, they, to me, I think they should, they should really understand what their need is and make sure that that number addresses that need, and that's what goes in front of the voters with us.
Would, would this, you, you see, we holding another informational meeting?
Yeah.
We, we have to, we have to, at least.
One of the things you might consider is to split that meeting for each group, have them both the same night. You draw a larger crowd, get the information out on both sections.
Interesting idea, I like that.
Yeah, and then invite the camera people to wherever it was. You you may wanna go larger and go up to the opera house for that, but.
I think that's an.
I I agree with you, Mel. No, I think that's a, I think having the vote at the same time is an excellent idea. You know, there's pros and cons either ways. You're splitting hairs, so.
Yeah. The, one of the problems, I think, you know, you know, people, uh, you don't wanna burn people to go out to multiple meetings. The problem is the high school vote is five towns. It's not just for Gens. And so, I mean, we'd be happy, Chris, to entertain, entertain.
Yeah.
You know, I think Walt Tham and Addison Penn and Ferrisburg are watching this as much as the Gens people are, so that's okay, you know, but but again, they're not, uh, I don't wanna say they don't have a nickel in it, but they're, it's not their, it's not their public.
And and each town has a different position with their grand list and their per people spending and so on, so, you know, we're a receiving town, Ferrisburg's a giving town. That's the other thing that I think for Gens could make a case that, you know, it may not cost as much per hundred dollars in Gens as it's going to in Ferrisburg. And if we can make sure Gens residents and taxpayers know that, that's important for them to to consider.
Definitely, but it's giving the Gens voters out, it's giving them the opportunity to hear what the school districts gotta say. It gives them the opportunity to hear what you people have to say about the police station. Get that information all at once. If you may draw a large crowd and yes, you may have people from other towns come and just sit in on one of the meetings.
Well, if you have the school first, people can leave afterwards if they didn't live in Gens, you know, it'd be simple enough to do that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Randy.
I definitely get like the idea of uh uh the votes being together. I've heard lots of comments from people about the school uh having another vote and and then town meeting coming in. Why, why didn't they just wait and all of that stuff? Uh just do it all at once and people get all the information at once and they can make their decisions based on that. Um I hadn't even thought about the joint informational meeting, but that doesn't sound like a bad idea to either.
That's why they they pay me the big money.
You know, just to get it all out there and people can understand what's going on and and make their decision from there.
Well, it's gonna make our, you know, our our selling of the bond that more important, you know, knowing there's, there is competition, so to speak. But I think that, you know, we we feel strongly that we got a good project, so. Anybody else? Any comments?
I have other comments.
On this?
Related to police, yeah.
Okay, why, why don't you go? You're up.
Yeah.
Well, it's just that.
I could tell you something about the timing and what, if I'm not mistaken, you could hold, uh, they could warn a meeting. Um they could meet on Tuesday night, get in an ad on Friday morning and still, they could still warn a vote for the fourteenth of May, which I know you were talking about. I know that was one of the dates you were looking at. I just wanted to let you know that I believe that they could do.
Yeah, yeah.
It's exactly thirty days apart from, from uh our our publication date from the Monday, which is the fifteenth.
Yeah, yeah.
For the warning. The agenda that I got in the email, Joan, it said they were gonna discuss a warning on Thursday.
Right, but they couldn't get an ad into the paper till the Monday. They can still do that.
And cause you have to advertise it three weeks.
But but it's not thirty days, that's, it's not thirty days and three weeks. It's a different, it's it's not that the notice has to be thirty days. It has to be posted three, uh, three weeks.
Average time.
The same day of the week, the last would not be less than three days before the vote. So it's not, it's not thirty, it's a little different formula.
Okay, true. I was, I was concerned.
There's plenty of time.
It's okay.
True.
Never mind.
It's okay. Sorry.
Okay, Randy.
Well, just a concern about the public in input. Uh the, um, at the last meeting, uh, there was discussion about adding to the the police committee and, I mean, we can't add members to our own committee. We would have to wait until a meeting for the council to do that. Um and I'm not sure, you know, who we would add, although Jerry Stagg has has, I think, helped us a lot with his, his comments. That were, I think, very valid comments and good questions. Um but it it leaves a question in my mind and maybe I should have the answer to this question having been here before. Uh but we're warning, um, for a bond vote of X amount of dollars. So if we have the committee and the council working to look at the plans, find out whether there's any trimming of the money on it. Uh which could happen, although I think this plan is pretty bare bones, um, what happens? Because we've already won, warned for X amount of dollars and if we find a way to shrink it by, say, a hundred thousand dollars, what happens to the hundred thousand dollars? I mean, uh, or it is our only choice is to go and have a bond anticipation vote, uh, a bond anticipation note. Uh and not bond it right up front. So that way, if there is uh some economies that we get, the taxpayers can get those economies. So I I guess maybe it's a more of a question to you, Mel.
Well, the the bond, uh, the way that the bond cycle works, if you will, is that is they do do it just once a year. And if there was a, if there was a successful bond vote in uh in, on May fourteenth, you know, I can tell you the next four days, that's all I'd be doing. It's all Joan would be doing too, is is putting this package together and getting it to Bob Jiral at at uh, at the bond bank. And conceivably you can get into that round. It's a real, it's a real struggle, okay? So that's, that's one thing, that's one option.
I think he told you June first was the month, the absolute last day.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
And that's stretching it, but.
So anyway, so we could do that. And the other thing is, the other thing that he did mention that we could do if let, is is you could go in and and, um, let's, and and, uh, bond. Once the committee finishes its work, if you've got a smaller project, you know, conceivably you could go in with a bond of, you know, let's say one point three million just for the sake of discussion. And do your project and the project ends up being X. And if the voters have authorized up to one million four hundred and fifty thousand, the following July, you could go back in and bond for that, for that hundred and fifty thousand. Alright, so you, it doesn't have to be one issue of bond. It can be done in two pieces, alright? I, you know, I mean, it can be done that way. I I almost think like, well, why don't you just just get a bond anticipation note and get the project done?
Note. And then wait.
And then at the, at the end of that, then you can see, okay, uh, you know, that bond doesn't have to be one point four or five, it can be one point four. You know, you could take a look at the water tower money, uh, as to how much of a down payment is going on there. So, so the, 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 the vote is up to one point four or five million. I mean, that's what it is, alright?
Right.
So, um, but I know, I know what you're saying, Randy. You know, you're, you like, you know, boy, I wish it was a hundred thousand dollars more, but at the same time, we don't wanna bump yourself.
No, no, no.
Less, less, less.
Much less, I mean, but you don't wanna bump yourself into a corner if it's not.
Right, no, right. Uh, well, the only concern I had is because if we're warning now at the, this maximum m- uh money and we end up somehow getting some economies from it, how do the taxpayers get that money back?
Well, I think that if the council says, if the council says to direct Joan, this is an easy thing, we'll follow this real easily. Do not bother submitting your, your paperwork into the bond bank by the first of June, okay? If you, if we don't do that, then then you know you're just gonna go through the whole life of the project and then a year from now, you would decide what the bond is gonna be. I mean, that's actually what we did here, you know, that's the way that we did it in two, that when we bought those fire trucks, Randy, that when the 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 voters authorized four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
And we, that was approved in November of two thousand and nine. Over the next year or a year and a half, Michael, something like that, was when they were able to find the two trucks, the aerial truck and the rescue truck. And I think the, the, the sum of those two trucks were, you know, it was about four hundred thousand, might have been four twelve or something like that. And we had a little bit of money. We sold a couple things and we only ended up bonding four hundred thousand, even though the voters authorized four fifty. So that's, that's, so you could do the same thing with this, uh. And that's how you get that back to the taxpayers because your, because your principal payment, princes, principal and interest payment.
Right, right, right.
Well, we just don't have to pay bread loaf for ten months before.
Right. Yeah.
Mike's not here, so it's okay.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, it's worth, uh, you know, I think that, I think the thing that the real comparison is let's say that the voters approve that.
Do it going.
You know, one of the first thing we do is, is to find out, okay, how much, what is the interest rate on a tax anticipation note? Because if that interest rate is is four or five, then that says, let's, let's get ourselves locked in at municipal bond bank.
At three three six.
Right.
Right, alright. So.
Right.
What if we can borrow the money at two or two and a half? Any other questions? Um, if there's not, do we want to?
Yeah, I prepared, uh.
There's a resolution.
I, I went back and read the law a little closer as to the process and handed out two documents. Both are, both of which are certainly different than the one that you got in your packet. So the first item, item, Bill, is the resolution. And if that resolution is voted on, passed and signed, then you move to the, the warning.
Okay. So the resolution basically states that we find it a public interest to construct this police station, that the cost of the purchase is paid out of ordinary annual income revenue.
Can't be. Cannot be.
Okay, well, we, it's too great to be paid out of ordinary annual revenue, excuse me. You got that, Joan?
I know.
Um, so by adopting this resolution, um, we would submit a proposition that would incur bonded debt to pay for the purchase of the real estate and the construction of the police station for the city of Gens. So this would be the authorization from the city council to then go forward to warn.
Yeah. That's correct.
The, the meeting and the, and the bond.
I make send motion.
Motion made. Second by Joe. Further discussion?
Second.
Um, can we correct resolution at the top? Make sure it's spelled right?
Yeah, sure. I'm glad somebody revised.
It's a, it's a re-olution.
Is that correction okay?
It's fine with me.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Yeah, great. So we need to sign it.
Yeah, we'll get to it later.
Yeah, but we'll get, yeah, with a, with a correct, correct.
And so the next thing is the warning, right?
Be the acceptance of the warning, the amount of those one million and four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
What, excuse me a minute, was there any motion in that last thing?
Yeah, well, Randy made a motion to accept the resolution.
She's looking for the vote.
No, I'm looking for the motion in the second. I didn't see any of that.
Randy made the motion.
Motion, Joe second.
Show the second, yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry.
And the next would be the, the warning.
Yep.
For the vote, for the bond. Uh, the date we have here is May fourteenth, which is a Tuesday. Poll's nine seven. And.
I'll make that though.
You make that motion.
Yeah.
Randy, motion. Randy second. Check the spelling. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yeah, it was. Okay? Just ready.
I'll make that.
The police committee is gonna have to do some scrambling here and and making sure that we have some information out and participation. So, um, if we're going to truly have additional members, then people here ought to be proposing additional members because, for the council to.
Yeah.
I oppose Jerry Stagg.
You know?
I would just propose that we make sure that these, uh, meetings are open to the public and well-publicized so that, you know.
People can show up.
People can show up and and provide comments.
Lynn, you said that you're, I mean, you're a proponent of the, of the police station. You'd be willing to serve on this committee regardless of your position as, you know, as old or not. But if if you haven't, you know, if that's a topic that's, you know, for John about, I think that, I mean, the more people we can get involved, either informally on the committee or doing outreach.
Mm-hmm.
Various ways, I think, is, is what we really need to kinda strategize about now since we've only got over a month, so.
Could.
So.
Could you, could you do an enabling sort of approval that would allow Randy or you to add members to the committee without having to wait till the next council meeting? Because I, my, my comments last time around were, I think it would be wise to have a couple of people who are a lot less enthusiastic about this, just so you hear and you know where to go with it. I mean, they aren't gonna change the bond vote or anything like that, but they, they could conceivably really help. Um, and a, a, a couple of people who would admit to voting no on the last one, let's say, might be able to be of assistance to if those votes.
I mean, do they have to formally be on the committee or i- are we really just trying to outreach and and get all the information we can get, I guess? I mean, they can be invited to meetings or.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, anybody could come to the meeting. It's a public meeting.
I think we wanna learn all we can and then.
What's that?
As long as you have four or more council members.
Don't have.
You have to have four. If you're holding a public meeting, you could have four.
Well, it's a committee.
It's a committee, it's a committee.
Committee, okay. Otherwise it's a.
That would work.
Randy.
Yeah, that's.
What you just said would work with what I think.
Okay.
But you, but your comments about Jerry, he, he is one great person, very enthusiastic, does a beautiful job at researching, digs deep. And he would be a real asset if you could just get him out to come to a couple of your meetings.
Congress has. And it's, and it's easy for a lot of people probably to meet informally somewhere, you know, without the cameras, without, without the press, without, you know.
Definitely.
Do you think Mike?
It's a public meeting.
Do you think, Mike, do you think he may know somebody else that could also come on committee? I mean, we.
Yeah, I, I don't know. You'd have to ask him.
Well, they can certainly, they can certainly participate, uh, so.
Yeah, we can mention it to him and then.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, uh, do you, do you think that he would serve i- if we, if we asked him to be on the committee?
Strongarm a little bit, yeah.
I mean, how, how about if there's a motion that, that Jerry be appointed, provided he accepts the position?
Hmm.
I'll second that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
You get that, Joan?
Are we gonna add Lynn all at the same time?
Do I add Lynn too?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, if that works. That's two people right there that we, we.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Mel, we can reach out to Jerry?
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't know, I wanna, Michael, be, maybe do it. I'll, I'll send Randy an email.
No, I will interfere.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a question.
So we'll be. Yeah.
On this ballot that we're gonna be putting out, probably won't happen now, but I was wondering when they go to vote, if, could there be any extra little lines underneath? So why they didn't vote or why they did vote, you know, so we could get a better feel?
Cause ballots are regulated.
So they are.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be a great idea to get a sense.
Yeah.
So that would stop our minds, you know, we know more how everybody felt about it.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I wonder if you could do like a Bill Doyle survey at the end.
Okay, well, can't do that, didn't vote the polls any longer either.
You can't?
No, then, right, Joan, do.
I did this year. I brought him back.
Oh, you did? Uh, I brought him here, people asked for it.
I brought him back this year. Too many people complained, complained.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, ballots are can, are regulated, they can part, and part of it is, is that you cannot, you can't put anything on, it's illegal to put notes on a ballot.
Okay.
I mean, say if you start, you write yes or write no and then you start telling a story or whatever there, you, you.
It's invalid.
It's could be, it could be regarded as a faux ballot. You're not supposed to be.
Yeah, because it could indicate who it might, might vote at that ballot.
You voted, yeah, it can.
Okay, so there's a motion to add Jerry and Lynn to the police station committee and any further discussion?
Committee.
Pending their, well, I mean, Lynn's already agreed, but we haven't heard from Jerry.
Acceptance, yeah.
Jerry.
In favor?
Uh, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
I think we'll be having a meeting soon, probably as early as next week, maybe.
Good. Good. Fine, yeah, earlier if necessary. Okay, um.
I'll just publicize the email.
Water tower policy. We, I think we felt it was important to get back to this only because we are gonna be using some of that money for this police station for the down payment. And I think that what we presented certainly meets that criteria, but it's not an official policy yet. So there was a, a draft that was in your minute, your, uh, packets, which has probably gone through three or four different drafts. And we can discuss it, we can, we can still change it, we certainly have that ability, but at least it's back on the table so that people can, um, you know, give us, give me your thoughts on it and go from there. It, um, there's a history of the fund, current balances of the fund that Mel conveniently filled in for me. And then talks about the, the purpose of the fund and. And the use of the fund, which would be primarily for new construction of facilities, long-term repairs, renovations, improvements to municipal facilities or municipally owned property, which could be improvements to potentially some of the parks or or such. And then as a local share for matching grants for, uh, downtown improvements and stuff. We did talk about economic development. I mean, that seemed to be the, the gray area. I've read a lot of different definitions of it and it really comes down. And it really comes down to raising the standard of living in the community. I mean, it's not just about increasing the grant list or lowering unemployment. Um, it, it really, so it's a much broader context for that term. That definition is what I came up with, we can include it, we can edit it, revise it as necessary. Uh, beyond that, the fund allocation, um, this draft has twenty-five percent of the, of the revenue that should be placed in a separate fund each year. Which would not be able to be touched until the, uh, the income of the fund terminated. Um, and then the criteria for using the seventy-five percent allocated for, for expenditures would be to benefit the cities of Regent's, increase the livability of the community. Promote projects that are in the municipal plan, uh, promote economic development in the city, and any expenditures that can be leveraged with additional fund sources whenever possible. And the city council will be responsible for each expenditure, uh, there would be a discussion and a motion. And, uh, we will just keep track of the, the list and so on, and make sure that anyone that had a project they wanted to bring to us could certainly do that at any point in time. Any discussion?
Do you want a motion first?
Well, I guess I'd request for open discussion if we had any, or we can do discussion, if, if, if we think we're close, we can certainly have a motion and then have discussion.
I think we need to have a motion, so we can discuss it.
So, for, okay.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We do, okay.
We're working under informal boards and committees' Robert rules today, so that's okay.
So we have a motion from Randy, is there a second?
What's the motion?
To accept the water tower policy as a rev- so there's a motion, there's a second, now we'll discuss it.
To accept this, accept it?
I still have concerns, as you know I've had in the past.
Yep.
About exhausting income?
No.
Or, or specifically what, just so we can get a handle on what, what it is your thoughts are.
Well, I thought at the time when, when this first, when we had this, and when I got, first got on city council, that this was gonna be up to the, uh, city council to use at their discretion. For anything that we needed, or, you know, and I'm not saying pay this bill or that bill, and that they were gonna have, our decision was gonna be made on basis like that. But now we're allocating so much money going someplace here and other money going other places where I just feel that this money was in, put in place just so that for Gens, when they needed it, they would be able to use it. I mean, I maybe be from the old school, but that's.
Well, we're not, it doesn't mean you have to spend it all.
No, I know, it does.
There's no question about that, I mean, that's, and that's what, I, I think my take on it was when, when I first started writing this. Was that there needs to be a foundation from which this, this money can be spent. Meaning that it, it, it couldn't be spent on something frivolous, that it couldn't be spent on something that is, you know, legal fees for a lawsuit that the city incurs. I mean, something like that, that, that probably shouldn't have happened, or we should have been more careful, and so it's, it's intended to have a, be a framework. That will benefit the citizens over a, over a long-term period as opposed to just a one-time expense that it, that some council could vote for. And this would, this would disallow that from happening unless the, 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 the policy was just, you know, floated down or, or taken out of the, 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 whatever you call it, the, the.
So, I, I, I'm just curious, you're, you look at it as like a rainy day fund, uh, in case we need it for operations, is that what you're?
Anything that we need it for, okay, I'm not, and of course, we're all intelligent people, so when we're on, on the board, I hope we have common sense, we're, this has come up several times since I've been on the board.
Uh-huh.
But yet we, we would, you've been on when this had been brought up for the water fund, and we sit there, I mean, we're just very concerned people, but if you have something that's coming up and you need to fall on some resource. It's there, and it's just like we're controlling it, and I think when this all started out, it wasn't supposed, the intent was not to be doing that. But that's just, you know, that's the vibes I got when I first got on the board, so. In other words, what we wanna do isn't really what we should be doing because there was no intention of doing it that way. I'm sorry. There, how's that?
Did you get that Joan? Randy, comment?
Well, when I came on board as manager, I, I was told, and I, and, and I've never, I've never seen it written anyplace, that the, the tower fund was for, uh, basically downtown improvements. Um, and, and it, it was, it was kind of restricted, uh, so when, when, when I was around, I, I never really looked at other parts of the community. I just considered the money needed to be focused in that area, now I don't know whether that was right or not. Um, and let's remember that any council can change this.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so if they wanna use it for something else, they can vote something else. Uh, this doesn't stay forever. Um, and my, I guess the only thing I would add in it is, uh, on the first page in number three where it says the local share of matching grants for s- streetscape improvements. I think we might need to add, um, and, uh, economic development endeavors or something like that wi- with it. Because there may be a matching grant to do something along the lines of the economic development, I don't.
Well, that's, th- those three are, are ca- the definition of capital improvements.
Oh, the capital improvements, okay.
Economic development's on the second page, as part of the criteria, so I, I'm not sure, I know what you're saying, but it might be covered on the second page.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Mel?
Well, I guess the, what I wonder about is, uh, the, uh, just, just so you know, let me announce that we did not get funding of the, uh, of the, uh. The, the bad news is we did not get funding for the sidewalk extension project, um.
In North Main Street?
The North Main Street, we would, did not get that funding. And, and we were, uh, uh, I certainly was planning on using water tower fund to represent the, the local share on that project. And I think the, for the project, it was a hundred, a hundred thousand, so it was twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five, I think, right, off to of that. So the point is, is when I s- when I, when I see that policy, and it, and it only says local share for streetscape projects. I end up wondering, well, does that mean that, let's say that next year we wanna resubmit this project? All right? And, and obviously now with the policy in place, I would come to the board and, and want, request that, that twenty-five thousand of this be encumbered for that project. So I guess my question is, would that be a complying project?
I would think so, it's, I, that's.
Yeah, it's not a municipal-owned property or, or facility, but it certainly is being leveraged, and I think that's.
Well, so I guess what I wonder about is, you know, you know, you know, new construction municipal facilities, you know, long-term repairs, replacement. The, you know, the local share of matching grants.
Period.
Uh, you, uh, uh, prom- uh, promote projects that are promulgated in the municipal plan.
Isn't that in the municipal plan?
That would probably, yeah, would fall into that category, it would be.
Could, yeah. Yeah, there's always.
I just wonder if it, if it's, uh.
Yeah, there might, there might be a way to reword it, that's.
Right.
Well, I guess, um, I mean, do you think that, do you think that, you know, we don't need to belabor this? I mean, do you think we ought to go back and take one more closer look at it, we don't need to approve it tonight? You know.
Yeah, we can, we could table it.
You know, and just, and, you know, maybe make a change here, maybe kind of tighten it up a little bit, and then come back and, and, you know, see how we feel about it at that point.
It just seems like this is an ember ending.
I know, I know.
It just keeps going around and around.
I know, well, it's getting close, hopefully it's.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, that we, that we, that we keep flexible, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, well, there has to be a certain flexibility.
Cause I don't, cause really, if, cause when I read this, you know, to me, uh, you know, uh, the, the, number one and number two are about facilities.
Yep.
All right, number three, it says streetscape improvements, all right? And, uh, you know, if it was local share of matching grants for transportation improvements, at least that's a much broader.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's much broader than, than what that thing might imply.
I think we had a table that you and I can try and change that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, we certainly have had a discussion here and I think we're, we're close.
And I feel that maybe if you had more flexibility, like you're just talking about, I would feel more.
Okay, okay, let's do that then, we'll, we'll table, we'll come back.
Yeah.
So how do we get out of this?
Well, somebody needs to move to table it.
Yeah.
I moved to table.
Okay.
You're not, you're not on the floor.
Right.
No, no, that, that's okay, the, if, if, that's okay, the mo- there's a motion on the floor, that's fine, and if you, if somebody moves to table.
Right. To table.
And somebody seconds it, there's no debate about that.
Right.
You just vote on that, and then, and then.
We come back.
But typically, the motion to table is, sets to a date certain, so if you're gonna say.
Okay. Well, at two weeks hence.
Okay.
Next meeting date.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion, second?
It's probably the only motion, Mike, that you can, you can put another motion out.
Who's doing the motion?
Right, Ziggy make the motion.
Yeah, it's not a debateable.
Ziggy's motion?
Ziggy's motion.
Who's seconding?
I'll second.
Of Lowell, I guess Lowell will second.
I'll second.
Oh, you second.
Either one, doesn't matter.
Okay, great, um.
We're gonna move it.
Vote, vote, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, um, twenty-nine, rec. committee, anything to, quick update?
Yep, uh, rec. committee, yep, rec. committee held a, had a meeting last Friday, uh, we met with David Raphael, who, uh, we basically had a conversation about maybe what our vision was for the toddler park. Um, he has come back with a preliminary estimate for his services, uh, and, uh, two members of the committee, Tara and Bets and, um, Jen Johnson are gonna. Meet with maybe some local parents with some toddlers, and we're gonna have, our next scheduled meeting is the third of, uh, May, and we're, we'll hopefully have at that point. Uh, be able to start working on a, more of a, a pla- a plan to, so that we can get a, uh, an estimate and so forth to present to the council.
Great.
I guess, so on Joe's point, um, I guess what I would, uh, at least look for would be a nod, uh, from the board. If it's okay to use the, uh, the, the, the facilities recreation reserve fund, uh, for this purpose.
And the, the bid was, or the estimate was twenty-nine hundred?
Twenty-nine hundred, right.
For his, for his services.
For, for planning services.
Right, yeah, that's not the, that's not the estimate for the, the project.
Project, yeah. We wish, but it, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think, I, I looked at the, you know, the, the bid and it certainly looked reasonable.
Yeah, I think it's the only way that the, that the, you know, for the committee to move forward and, and whether or not we're applying for funding elsewhere or soliciting donations or whatever.
We're gonna need it.
We need to get, we need to have a plan.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I think so too.
What area is that?
It's gonna be located, uh, between the swimming pool and East Street, next to the, uh, elementary school. That open, that open area there.
Above Stella Dean's house.
Yeah.
Right next to my middle mom's house.
So she'll be listening to toddlers on the swings?
It's crazy.
There's a lot of excitement about this project, a lot of people are really asking.
Fifty-five, you know, she, well, my grandsons go over to the.
Oh, yeah.
Go over to the, the playground.
Do we need a motion, or do you just need a nod?
I'm, I'm fine, as long, I'll take a nod, I don't care.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fine, I think, I think we're in agreement that that could be used for that.
Yeah. Okay.
She puts in her notes, nod.
Unanimous nod. Uh, Mel, do you have anything, is there a city manager's report that we need to be up to date on, you, you, we got the financials here, um, anything unusual that you know, or we in pretty good stead here?
Yeah, that's good, that's good, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I think, I just wanna, the only thing I would like, just to let you know, as you know, Bill, uh, on Thursday, some of you won't like to see this guy, but Cy Bailey is gonna be in town. And to, he'll be inspecting those, any properties that received a zoning permit or approved over the last year, so. So he, he actually, we remember when we did reappraisal in two thousand and seven, the company did, did that appraisal, it was called APUS, Ed Clodfelter being the principal. Uh, APUS is, I'm gonna say no longer, and APUS now is transferred to municipal, New England Municipal Resource Center, which is our, which is our software. Municipal software company, it's enrolled into them, and so, in essence, Ed Clodfelter, so it's not like we're totally switching. Cause it's, I think it's really been good to whoever did the reappraisal to, not that nobody else, not that there's other appraisers out there, Bill, as you know, that could do this work. But it, it does provide consistency by having the same, uh, group, if you will, do the maintenance that did the original appraisal, so.
Yeah. Ed merged his firm into Nemrick, and actually Cy was a, worked for Ed for many years. He was a district advisor for the property evaluation review for the last probably four or five years, and just left there. And is now a part-time appraiser for Ed, along with a few other appraisers statewide, so I know him really well, he's a nice guy, got a great personality. You know, he's, he's very engaging and people will not have a problem with him, I'm sure.
So he should be able to do all the field work in one day, uh, that, that punch list is not very long, uh, in, in Regent's. So he'll, he'll do his, uh, field work and should be able to do his data work, uh, that day, and then I'll, we'll, I'll, uh. Get the listers together to review the results of his work, and then they will set, uh, grievance day, um, you know, it'll be held early again this year, probably not as early as it was last year. But, you know, certainly, I would think easily in, in May for sure, so. And that obviously will give, uh, uh, give the city council early information on the grant list, uh, so that when we're working on budgets, you can, you can at least have a, a preliminary tax impact.
Good. Okay. Um, it's my understanding that to discuss the, the personnel.
The appointment, appointment of a public officer.
Appointment of an alderman, public officer.
Yeah.
If we choose to, we can go into executive session, we cannot vote in it, we have to come back out and vote afterwards, but if we wanted to discuss it privately, we could do that. Um, is there a motion to go into executive session or not?
I'll make a motion to go into ex- executive session.
Second. Lowell made a motion, Randy seconds it, is there a discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we will go upstairs for, hopefully not too long, um, discuss our candidates. I would tell you that I would love to have either one of you serve on this board, so.
It'd take a while for a charter change to have eight people.
I know, I know. Okay. So I would like to thank you both for your interest and your volunteerism. Um, we had an incredibly difficult discussion, um. And I think what we would like, we are gonna, um, we, we reached a consensus. We will have a motion and vote on the motion for the appointment of the, the vacant aldermanic seat. Um, I would just say that for either one of you, you know, the, the person that, that is appointed, we look forward to working with you. The person that was not appointed, we look forward to working with you as well, and hope that you, you know, if you feel like you wanna be on the council, please run a year from now, or, or, or March. Um, so with that being said, um, do we have a motion to appoint Peter Garren or Lynn Jackson to the vacant aldermanic seat?
I make said motion.
More.
And we added a council member. We told you it was hard.
Tag team alderman.
Well, you made the motion, now finish it.
Uh, I make the motion that we appoint Lynn Donley for the, to fulfill the one-year term vacated by Bill Bennett.
Second.
There's a second? Discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Lynn?
Thank you.
Peter, thank you for your time, and please, you know, stay in, stay involved and support you in any way we can.
Okay.
This was, this was tremendously difficult for us.
Cover stuff.
We could have been up there all night.
Yeah, because both of you are very good.
I agree.
You got your Tuesdays free for the next year.
Yes or no? Yes or no?
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.